Welcome, everybody. Today, the purpose of today is to release our, the Water Defense testing results to date that were done on behalf of the community and release our conclusions to date. There are three parts, and then we're going to open this up for questions. Water Defense summary results I will go through, the prior EPA research and publications identifying gaps related to disinfection byproducts. These are including unregulated DPBs. You're going to hear DPBs a lot. Those are disinfection byproducts. You get those chemicals and those volatile chemicals like chloroform and others when chlorine in the system reacts with organic matter. And given the compromised pipes and other factors in Flint, Michigan, could it be that organic matter is reacting with the chlorine and the disinfectants being added in Flint? And is it possible that these new, that these newly formed DPBs and related, are related to the health effects reported by the residents of Flint? Those are the key questions. And then we're going to get into some of the detailed lab reports. The Water Defense summary, and this, I will make the, this presentation available to the media that's interested and obviously the residents that we posted on our website. Little bit about what Water Defense has done differently is we have, we have tested the whole home, meaning the state of the water as it enters the house, the water heaters, the exposure pathways in the house, the sinks, the bathwater, the bathtubs. We are testing the water, the way people interact with the water. For example, unless you take a cold shower, we don't think it makes sense to take testing from cold water because we, you need to know what's in the water heater. So generally, what we found in the water heater testing is lead ranges from 37 parts per billion to 1,100 parts per billion. And to put that into context, the drinking water standard is 15 parts per billion. These are about ranges. This contamination is not in equilibrium or a steady state, and there are various implications with all this stuff going on, too. And you're going to see some prior EPA research from 2009 that actually reinforces everything I have been saying. And this is basic, simple, common sense. You don't shower or bathe in sink water you drink and vice versa. And we tested the hot sink in the shower water. And as recently as March 29th, I think Tony Palladino's here, we found his, in his hot sink water, 2,400 parts per billion of lead. We found ranges of 16 parts per billion to 2,400 parts per billion of lead. We have found phosphorus phosphate compounds from 620 parts per billion through 7,500 parts per billion. There are no standards to speak of of this. We don't know what that means. We're continuing to do further research. The volatile chemicals in showers, water heaters, and sinks from hot water. Again, I want to reinforce, there are no standards for showering or bathing. And Councilman Mays, for almost two years, has been talking about the lack of standards in showering and bathing. So the showering and bathing, there are no standards. So everything you hear about is tied to drinking water standards. We have found chloroform from 15 parts per billion to 78 parts per billion. Drinking water standard is 80 parts per billion. To put it in context, there are no bathing or showering standards. We have found 1,4 diclobenzene, 68 parts per billion to 970 parts per billion. Given the compromised plumbing distribution system in Flint, including inside homes, is it possible that chemicals created, detected, and undetected are potentially impacting human health? And again, I have been in the homes, done the testing with the local 370 UA Plumbers Union. One of the affected homes is Harold Harrington, Ben Ranger, and we will get to an announcement we had today from the UA out of Annapolis, Maryland, where Ben and I were yesterday. Water Defense has formed a partnership with the UA Plumbers Union, and we have the press release that literally was just announced, for those that are interested, to discuss So the next one is, this is the EPA 2009, seven years ago. Susan Richardson, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This is all publicly available that I've researched. This has all been presented by the EPA in various industry talks. This is the EPA on disinfection byproducts, exposure routes. For those of you that have been following what Water Defense has been saying, what Councilman Mays has been saying, again, this is from the EPA. Inhalation, ingestion, and dermal absorption, total internal dosage. So I'm trying to break down a complicated system, the complicated situation to basic logic. And the basic logic is, you don't just drink water, you have dermal skin absorption and inhalation. So I want to go on record, I absolutely agree with what the EPA is well aware of and presented publicly in 2009, seven years ago. And if there is one thing, especially the media, takes away today, one thing. EPA 2009, as presented by Susan Richardson from the Office of Research and Development. Route of exposure is important. Can get 2X, two times exposure from 10 minutes in the shower compared to drinking 2 liters of tap water, inhalation. This is the EPA. They went on record publicly. We agree with the EPA. We're listening to the great work of the EPA, and it's very simple to understand, two times exposure from 10 minutes in the shower compared to drinking 2 liters of tap water. Not Water Defense, not Scott Smith, this is the EPA, Office of Research and Development. Some DPBs, volatiles, termally absorbed. Again, EPA, greater than 600 disinfection byproducts identified, 600. We're not looking, based on this EPA information, we are not looking for enough chemicals as Water Defense. Something highly technical, there's something called tentatively identified compounds. We have requested that. We have not seen any final lab reports from the EPA, the state of Michigan, or anyone else. To my knowledge, we're the only ones that have produced our independent outside lab And this is from the EPA in 2009. They prioritize greater than 500 unregulated disinfection byproducts. Now, we need to look for them. The good news is, if we, if we test the bath and shower water, there is no need to panic. We can get you answers. That's why we're here. We're here to work for these community leaders. The community leaders get what's going on. They just need to be supported with research. My offer continues to remain open. The EPA, I have invited to join me on the ground and in the baths, in the showers of these incredible Flint residents that have allowed us to test and do research and gather data. We are open to collaborate, everybody, in the most respectful and professional manner possible. This is about the community of Flint and the residents of Flint. Important findings, this is from the EPA, new emerging disinfection byproducts. Unregulated disinfection byproducts found at significant levels. Why is that important for Flint? That is important because for two years, you had compromised, galvanized, and lead pipes, and organic matter is in the system reacting with this chlorine. There has been incredible heroic work done with lead and those great individuals that identified it. But it is now 2016, and we need to get the data to figure out what is really going on. There are only 11 of these disinfectant byproducts regulated in the United States. Again, according, this is according to the EPA. And this is the roadmap, recommendations from the EPA, from publicly available presentations. Human health effects not solved yet, need more toxicity studies. We absolutely agree with that. The toxicologist for Water Defense is Dr. Judith Zelikoff of NYU Medical School. I encourage you to Google her, look her up. We are going to make her available in the next two weeks for a Google Hangout to talk about all this. We welcome the EPA, the state of Michigan, anybody else out there to join us and have a roundtable discussion on a Google Hangout and talk about this because it is about the community of Flint and solving this. And again, this is all the EPA. I think this is very important to go through this today because the EPA disclosed this in 2009, saying the same thing that we are drawing attention to now. EPA, more than 50% of the disinfection byproducts not known. And this is, again, publicly available presentations, documents from the EPA. Health effects driving DPB research include the recently observed reproductive developmental effects, including spontaneous abortion observed in epidemiological studies, as well as the discrepancy between the types of cancers observed in animal studies for regulated DPBs. Anyway, I think I've covered enough. I don't need to read all this to know this, that the EPA does great work. And the Office of Research and Development has directly reached out to me and Water Defense, and we welcome work with the EPA. We are here to support the EPA, to work transparently side by side with them. In no way, shape, or form will Water Defense ever get involved in politics because that, we are here to support the community, to, to work for the leaders. I understand Pastor Overton is ill today. We are here to work for Melissa Mays, for Eric Mays, for the mayor, for the local community. And I learned a lot with, from Harold Harrington and Ben Ranger about galvanized pipes and how they get, you know, in the buildup and what gets released from the corrosive water. I'm going to ask them to make a few statements before we open it up to, to questions. And I want to clear something up, too, that this notion, we're focused on the facts and clearing up confusion. We are using sampling, grab sample water testing, the same as the EPA, the same as the state of Michigan. And we're also using a method developed by Water Defense. There is no, knowing that there are no standards for bathing and showering, I welcome any expert from the EPA, either the media, anybody that has any idea. We need in this country to develop a way to have bathing and showering standards and measure what you're exposed to. As Melissa Mays knows, what we could do is we could put our skin in the shower for 20 to 30 minutes, like we bathe and shower, instead of a split second, and cut away our skin and send it off to a lab. But instead of doing that, we're using a matrix material to get exposure. Now, given this EPA background, we think this is insanely simple and is just basic common sense. We are doing this in conjunction with the same grab sample testing. What we're doing differently with the same grab sampling testing as the agencies is we're going for the state of the water as it enters the house, the water heater, and everything else.
And I'm Councilman Mays, and I would like to thank everybody that's here today, attending this press conference, getting the knowledge. I would like to thank all of the people who have complained of skin rashes and hair losses for the last two and a half years, who call those, you know, issues to my attention. And I would especially like to thank Melissa Mays, who have always been a technical person, just like in my mind, we have Water Defense League, the Water Defense, fighting for all the groups, all the activists, because without those activists, I wouldn't have the knowledge to advocate and represent. We've been saying that bathing and showering water has been an issue. I found out along the way that bathing and showering water is unregulated, like drinking water, because they have drinking water standards. So hopefully, at the end of this journey, with the help of Scott Smith and others, maybe they will enact some federal bathing and drinking waters, I mean bathing and showering water standards. If I'm wrong, they can prove me wrong, but I think that we have no bathing and showering water standards, but we have federal drinking water standards. So I would like to thank Melissa Mays, if I may, Mr. Smith, I want you to know, I name names. When people invite me and introduce me to people that I don't know, Melissa Mays introduced me to Scott Smith. I'm an elected official, I have to listen to the people. So I just like to do things in a certain way. And I thank Melissa and all the people in the city of Flint who alerted me of the problems they was having in their mind with bathing and showering water standards. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Smith, and those that you work with as we head through this journey. Thank you.
So we think we need to develop new testing protocols for cumulative exposure risk, and I'm open to anybody that has any ideas for a different method than we're using. At least we are doing something, and we are going into the homes to help support this community, and we will continue to do that.
What about fabric, clothes that are washed, washed and dried?
If it's okay, I'll get to that. I just want to, but that's a-
Testing, I wonder if it got done?
And just on April 11th, again, you know, we don't know exactly what this means, but we think it's logical that if you have 11, you know, in one home, on April 11th, there was 1,100 parts per billion in a water heater. Again, the drinking water standard is 15 parts per billion. Now, maybe that stays there forever, but maybe it doesn't. And we think it makes basic scientific common sense to continue to get more data points and find out what's happening. Because if the PA, there are changes that can happen that can cause that lead to go into solution. And given what we've learned about the volatile organic chemicals, given, the EPA said it seven years ago, 10 minutes in a shower can be two times what you drink in 2 liters. And we have all this data reports we're going to make, we're going to make this available to anybody that's interested. And I want to read from my conclusions so there, there's no confusion. And Dr. Judith Zelikoff of NYU Medical School prepared this with me today and reviewed that. Again, she is a toxicologist, and there are very complicated issues, and that's why we go to one of the countries, if not the world's best toxicologist, who we have at Water Defense. And these are the conclusions that Water Defense has made as of April 22nd, 2016. We need much more testing data, along with sound science and toxicology studies, to reach accurate conclusions. We must continue to provide the community with as much information as possible and continue, to the best of our ability, complete and thorough testing of water and air in homes. We must understand that without proper toxicological studies, that we cannot draw any cause and effect relationships between chemicals detected and reported health effects. Epidemiological studies are also critical to better understand the affected Flint residents and the serious gaps that currently exist. For example, no showering and bathing standards. Without standards and cause and effect relationships, it is difficult to draw definitive conclusions that it is either safe or not safe to bathe and shower in Flint water. We are committed to doing the research and gathering the data to get the answers for the Flint residents that they deserve. That's what this is about. Given what we know and what we don't know, there is no way that the concerns and questions of the Flint residents should not be clearly and precisely addressed. And that is my statement. With that being said, I'd like to, to introduce Harold and Ben Ranger from the UA Plumbers Union, and then Melissa Mays to follow up, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thanks, Scott, for coming to Flint. First and foremost, I am a Flint resident. Secondly, I am a master plumber, and I am appalled that we were lied to for 18 months about the quality of our water. They told us for 18 months it was safe to drink. We smelled it, but they were the so-called experts. They finally got it in October when it came out that there was lead in the water. I kicked myself for listening to the so-called experts, started getting involved. If I'd known one tenth then what I know now, we could have stopped this a long time ago. February 27th, EPA come to my house to do testing on my water because I tested over 150 parts per billion of lead two weeks earlier. Scott Smith came out on Saturday, the 27th, tested my water. Results weren't back yet, so Scott didn't tell me one way or another. The next day, the EPA shows up, hands me a pamphlet before they even draw one sample saying our water's safe to bathe in. How can they do that?
Four sheets like that.
Same old, same old.
So that's when I got, working with Scott, we're testing a lot of homes, we're working together, we're going to be training our guys to be able to test these homes. If anything like this around the country pops up again, we'll be the first line defense for the residents. I don't want to put my trust in any government entity again, after what happened in Flint. So we're going to work hard to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, Ben, Melissa?
January 23rd, 2015, I was standing up here facing this direction, addressing the city council, screaming and yelling about the rashes, the hair loss, and how awful I felt in my shower. It's over a year ago. I said, we need an epidemiologist in here. We need to be able to connect what's happening in our water with what's happening with our bodies. I went ignored. They ignored me for quite some time, brought in Bob Boeckhoff, who thankfully is now-
Let them speak again.
-working with Scott, who addressed the issues of inhalation and absorption with the total trihalomethanes. He was the first person to speak up about this, as well as the first person to speak up. On February 14th, 2015, he addressed the city and said, hey, your water heaters are very dangerous, they breed bacteria. He talked about Legionella. He talked about the city and state being in violation of the lead copper rule. Nobody listened. We kept working, we kept doing testing, and we brought in Virginia Tech. We proved that there's a lead problem, and then it seems that everything else went away. The tunnel vision went right back to lead, lead, lead. And that's great, because that is horrible, and what it's done to our community is devastating, and we'll feel those effects for the rest of our lives. However, I know that lead hasn't changed the color of my hair. I know that lead isn't making my hair fall out in handfuls. I know that the lead copper is not causing the rashes on my body. I know that it's not causing me to need a rescue inhaler after showering. So these things I know, and no matter what I'm told, that I'm a fear monger, I'm pulling this stuff out of a hat, all the same things they've told us every single time we brought in an expert. I know that the chemicals that Scott found in my shower, because he tested my shower, explains a lot. The 1,4 diclobenzene, the fact that I have double the max level of chloroform, that's probably not healthy. So all of these health effects we're having, the things that they found in Tony Palladino's home, we've been screaming for how long now, Tony, how sick we are, and nobody's listening.
I came to Flint, right?
Yeah, and for two years, same thing. I mean, all the people sitting up here, they've been yelling and screaming with us since the beginning of 2015. So I finally feel like now we finally have some answers. It's not just lead and copper in our water. It's not just E. coli. It's not just Legionella. It's not just TTA gems. And this might seem scary, and oh my goodness, Melissa, you're scaring everybody, but you know what? What's scary to me as a mother is not knowing what my kids are being exposed to. Knowing what's in my water so I can protect my family, that, that's called strength, that's called power. That's the only thing we're asking for. Tell us what's wrong with our water so we know how to protect our families, because it's the one thing that this state has taken away from us for two years now. Stop lying, please stop putting out blanket statements saying it's safe to bathe, but you haven't even bothered to test the hot water. Please, just be honest with us and say we don't know. Because you know what? If they say, hey, we don't know, but we're going to find out, that's one of the reasons why I trust Scott. He said, Melissa, I don't know why your water's blue, but I'm going to find out. We are going to do some testing and try to find this out for you, because you deserve the truth. We all do. We've been through enough, and I don't want to hear any more candy coated stuff, I don't want to hear any more blanket statements.
No lies.
And no privatization, and I don't want any more of that. What I want is the truth so I know how to take care of my kids. So thank you to, to Eric, thank you, who's the one that listened to us, the one in city council who actually listened to us. And to Ben and Harold and all the hard work you guys are doing, and to Scott and to Bob Boeckhoff, everybody that has come to and told us the truth and is open to listening and working together, because that, to me, means something. If I can see PHHS, EPA, CDC, MDEQ, Virginia Tech, Wayne State, Water Defense, all working together to tell us what all is in our water and what we're exposed to and what needs to be done next, that's when I'll start trusting people. Until then, just keep testing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be right to say the first bathing and showering water standards?
Will be set right here in Flint, Michigan.
Yes.
To protect the rest of the world. Any questions? Yes?
I had a quick question, encouraged, BC 25. What, I'm a little unclear about what a DVP is. I'm, you know, just speak to me like a layman, and what is that?
It's called a disinfection byproduct, and it comes from the necessary addition of disinfectants, of chlorine and stuff, so you have safe water. But, and again, this is from the EPA research. And the, and chlorine and disinfection byproducts, and disinfectants react with organic matter in the distribution system. In your home, if you're, you know, if your pumps, if there's organic matter built up in the pipes, given the corrosive water here, there's a lot going on that we don't know. So the chloroform is one of over 600. And as you heard me quote, and I gave you that, from the EPA, there is hundreds of unidentified disinfection product products, and this was from 2009. So the issue here is now, you know, with the lead situation improving, 2016 is about what, what are the aftereffects of two years of corrosive water and the organic matter that was built up in the distribution system, all being released? We don't know, and we're working with all the experts. So 2016 is about what continues to be in this bath water and shower water, and we need a specific process. We can't establish cause and effect, however, we're seeing these chemicals in the water. And there are no standards to compare, other than drinking water.
Right.
And then, just a follow-up. What is your call to action for the state and federal government? What would you like to see them do tomorrow and then-
Okay, I can give you a specific call to action, and sorry, Tony Palladino to put you on the spot. If, with Tony Palladino's permission, I keep inviting the EPA. The EPA got back to me before this press conference, they don't have anybody available. EPA, Surgeon General, state of Michigan, any media, if Tony Palladino says it's okay based on the results I've seen, join me tomorrow, Sunday, Monday, and we're going to test his house side by side. Have everybody documented.
The EPA called me before I come to this meeting. I'm challenging them right now, Mark Edwards and anybody else, because you guys got to remember, this is two years of anger and frustration and pain. We're dying still. I'm still losing hair. I've held it in my hand, and I realize, wow, it's been two years. I'm challenging the EPA, the MDEQ, Snyder, anybody else. See me getting loud? This is how I come. This is where I'm at. This guy called me, and I told him, why don't you get with me Monday? They pounded on my door on a Sunday. I'm challenging, I'm throwing it out. This guy's willing to stand next to you? Why isn't Mark and him working together? Why isn't Kevin? Just like I said at the beginning, not one college in the city of Flint, not, not Kilby, none of them did anything till after this was blown out. Am I lying? No. So here I stand, still safe with my family, and now this guy's going to bring something. This is the new Messiah, I should say. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we're hurting. We are hurting. We've been fighting, we've almost been arrested. We've been trying to stand for not only the city of Flint, but the nation. People, this is our water. We are the great lake state. This is a great disaster, and here I am on my podium. Bring them on, bring them on.
First of all, thank you, Tony, but there's only one Messiah, and I refer you, I refer you to Pastor Overton for that.
I'm going to say with a 10 footer.
And again, this is not, this is about getting answers to build trust to say what we don't know. Yes?
Is it safe to say that you want some regulations for bathing water, too? You've mentioned a couple of times, that's a policy you're willing to make right now.
Yes, but first, we need to gather research data in collaborative- Yes, but first, we need to gather research data in collaborative ways with the EPA, with state agencies, everybody. And I keep saying, join me on the ground, test side by side. If you think the method Water Defense is calling for to develop for cumulative exposure, if you got a better idea, we're all ears. We're, I take, you know, we're, because this is a problem that is in the whole country, and it needs to be resolved. It's unacceptable that we don't have bathing and showering water standards and things like this are happening.
That's right.
You're my daddy.
Yes.
So, I want to address Councilman Mays and you, good sir. We're coming into late spring here, we're going to be hitting summer, real quick. Last summer, we had honey bridges, but when we know with the warmer weather, we're going to have a lot more need for consumption of water, we're going to want to take showers because we're sweaty. What do we need to look out for? What can we do to help with your data and whatnot? What do we need to do to make certain that we're safe come the summer when it's going to hit worse?
First of all, what Water Defense and I are doing is a small piece of this, and I will always say, I don't know. And it could be because, and that's why we're calling for everyone to stand with us, the agencies, the media, stand side by side, use a variety of testing methods. Our narrow focus is to identify these volatiles and what's in the water. As far as Legionella and all those other things, we're, you know, we don't pretend to have answers there. That's why we go to the country's, if not the world's best toxicologist, Judith Zelikoff, and it all starts with gathering data. Yes?
Okay, this is what I want to know. I've had this CDC call me and interview me. They said they're going to send out the EPA to test my water. They don't get back with me, I call. I know I didn't talk to you, I really need someone to come out to my house. I have to take a shower, we get sores, I'm allergic to the water, my kids have sores, our hair is falling out. I have to go out of Flint to go shower.
That's right.
And in my paint on my walls, peeling from the steam of the shower.
That's right.
Things that were metal have corroded in my bathroom, and I don't know how they can say it's safe to shower. The doctors don't even want to get on board, they thought I was crazy, until I brought my dog into the vet. We can't even bathe my dog, he had a sore and a rash, and we were itching like she had fleas. I went to my doctor, he's like, oh, put you on steroids. That didn't help because when I stopped showering, two weeks later, the numbness tingling went away, I didn't have to take my inhaler, the rash started to go away, but the other day, I went to dermatologist, had to shower, guess what? I'm itching within an hour, I'm itching everywhere, my hair is falling out, I get sores on my face, I have to take inhaler more than twice. I can't breathe, my kids have asthma as well, they have issues, what, what, I don't know what I'm going to do. I can't, I don't have money.
I want to answer your question. First of all, I got your Facebook message, my heart goes out to you. On behalf of Water Defense, this is what I keep saying, this is about you, it's about the community, it has nothing to do with Water Defense. It's about you and what we can do to help you. We will get to your house. And for those, for those of you in the media, for those of you from the federal agencies, here is what I don't understand. I hear these stories about you and your kids and all these people, and I'm going to come into your home in the shower and bath water, the EPA with everyone on the ground, why won't they join me in your house? Why won't the state agency? And I am not here to play politics, we are here to engage dialogue in the community and do what the nonprofit Water Defense said. Why won't the media join me? Why won't all the other experts? And we will test your home, it's an open invitation. What is, why, 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 you know, the CDC, they should all be showing up at your home. Why are they here?
We're all here.
We want to work with them. And I'm going to say, hopefully the media in this room will join us when we test, with your permission, if we can film it, to test your home.
We're all here.